I have six presentations. To actually be right after the public request to speak. And then to table number seven, under the finished business page. And table new business, aye.
I'd like to have four here for presentations and I would like to decide who to put on for reservation. And for item A, the new business, G P S.
Thank you.
I may be much of a quickie. Aye. We got motion. Second. We have motion for seconded, any further discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All the posts say aye. Okay, this is Linda. Moving on to approval of the Senate agenda.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Senate intent agenda, item A claims expenses town, regardless towns utility claims. B, the ten thirteen fifteen regular meeting minutes, the ten twenty seven fifteen special meeting minutes, and the ten twenty nine fifteen special meeting minutes. And C, give approval of the Whitestown Department of State vehicles, places, authorizing chief west officials to sign all these documents.
Second. All right, we've got motion and seconded, any further discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the posts say aye. And Senate agenda is adopted. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak coming into the, anything regarding the town or any agenda items? Is anyone signed up? Seeing that, we'll move on to presentations. First up, we have recognition of the Whitestown Police Department Reserve Officer.
This is Reserve Officer, graduated from Brownsville Reserve Academy on October the seventeenth. Will be going with your badge pending tonight with their families. First up is P S O Reserve Brandon Burton. Brandon graduated from Vindix High School in two thousand and nine. Received his degree Criminal Justice Associate of Science from Hyatt Tech Community College in two thousand and fourteen. He's graduated from the Brownsville Reserve Law Enforcement Academy on October the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Reserve Burton and his wife Megan, have one son, and they live in the Indianapolis area. If you'd like them in the honor of Pennington. P S O Brandon Burton. Reserve P S O Scott Cleaver, graduated from Marshall High School two thousand and five. Received his degree of associate science from Vincent University. He attended the Hendrix County and Lordy County Reserve Academy. Reserve Cleaver is married to Chelsea with her son Adrian. And they live here in Whitestown area. He did not get his uniforms all done, so. P S O Scott Cleaver. P S O Reserve Nick Purdy, graduated from the Brownsville High School two thousand and six. Graduated from the Brownsville Reserve Law Enforcement Academy on October the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Reserve Purdy resides in Brownsville, so he will be granted his girlfriend's name. P S O Nick Purdy. Reserve P S O Matthew Burks, graduated from the Thursday Christian School in two thousand. Received his bachelor's degree in human life in two thousand and six. Graduated from the Brownsville Reserve Law Enforcement Academy on October the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Reserve Burks is married to Megan. They have two daughters and a son, and they live in the Brownsville area. P S O Matthew Burks. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in rolling on the new P S O.
Thank you, gentlemen. Too many good eyes to help keep our station up.
All right, next up, we have the Main Street Trail. A few meetings ago, we were talking about trails and the extension of the trail has been from where it is, to the hotel down past Eagle Church to the Red Oak. That's, that's a long nation. And council person Whitman brought up, why don't we extend it to Legacy? And we said, because that would be expensive. We since found out that it's probably expensive, about one point two, one point three million. And Nathan came to me about a month ago. TAP had come out with a call, and I'll let him talk about the TAP application, and we will do, and we'll be able to sort of build a major track.
First, gentlemen, up to this, it's a, this will be a letter of intent. It's something that would be needed for it. The reason I'm giving it to you, one would be asking for approval, but also it has the number breakdown. Sure, there's various years to this together for me. They're assisting someone with the TAP application. As you see, engineering, construction services, and construction altogether, it was about one point nine million. And that's why we looked at the TAP application, since we don't have funds to do this. In this letter, I've said that park impact fees could cover, because we have to have something that we can show that in two thousand and twenty, if we're worried, we could have money to afford this. This is applying for two thousand and twenty money. The trail would go from where it currently sits in front of Eagle Church, up to where the trail starts at four hundred and comes along Harper Park. This is the, the letter of intent, committee saying we will have funds to do our management portion as part of the application process. And then I'll just bring back the application to the council. So this alternative is a solution to in this trailer. Be intent to apply the piece of money, with the intent of covering. Construction cost to include Eagle six fifty. They are looking at either having to potentially relocate the three graves on the west side, better ride along the roadway, the spot, or alternative to go around and not disturb those which could make it a good way to go. That's a great property, once again. Versus the entire cemetery on the other side of the road. So all those costs and numbers aren't figured into this. Our park would be instead of four hundred thousand. Bringing in over two hundred thousand here in impact fees, so if they're buying here, we'll have the money if that's the route they need to pay for this, or further funds we can available at the time.
Do you have any money to do with, if we got, if we got rent, rent from yesterday?
It would be for, the money would be for two thousand and twenty. Yes, through the state, so we would apply now, we would have funds. Would be on the twenty twenty.
For the year.
Yes.
Where would this trail, in front of the cemetery?
The, currently it stops right in front of Eagle Church. There is an extended pathway on the east side. And then it goes, they'll go up and then tie in at four hundred, where the trail goes in front of Harper's Park, the water farms, up six fifty, and then it ties into the stadium, which goes into the Legacy Core. So we do the tie-in with this, establish a footpath to keep people off, give people a safe alternative versus going on the street along six fifty.
What's the distance of the trailer over here for the one point nine?
It was nine thousand feet, so. Ninety-five million feet, so.
Almost two hundred.
Yeah. A lot of the costs involved in this is figuring the right way, the cemetery. The construction cost is one point five million, and those costs are bigger than that.
Construction facilities and building structures in the year?
Yes.
Help me understand, make sure we know. So this would, this would tie back over in front of Harper's Park, or where is this going to tie back to?
None of that's fully been established in this, because we don't know between now and two thousand and twenty, what our development's going to be, or when it's going to be, or the same going up. We're look, currently, if you want to show it, we're, we currently are at the Ludmado area, because there's a crossing there. And then on the east side, or west side of the street, going north across the bridge, taking it towards Harper's Park. Potentially taking it all the east down, and so we take it all the way out of four hundred. That's probably what'll go in the application. We'll just show that the drill's going up, and we can flip it if we need to do the development and land cost, when we have engineering, especially.
I would say, that's what we're thinking, we should talk to Harper's Park. Because there's a, there's an owner there that might not be so, going to allow the trail to the front. Make sure that we're talking to Harper's Park in case we could pull the trail back, and we're not just really going to.
Yeah, they currently have a, we're going to do a trail on one side, and we're looking at the other side.
Yes. Have a section of the plan that would not be accessible for the trail at this point.
Yeah, it would make it really awkward for them to come on, or edit down, take over.
Run out of the street, and then, so I, perhaps we just talk to Harper's Park now, about a work already.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. I was presenting this because it's known in the past to deny TAP applications for the one now. Our original town, and then, and around about, when they have a call, it's open for so long. I don't remember the due date offhand, but things end of this one, but it'll next month.
I'd kind of, even though I'm like, you said the plan, I'd like to make sure that tie-in and whatever we're doing is supposed to be going to Main Street. So I'd project, I'll say, so if we're not, uh, we're not, we're kind of, we're not.
There's a road trail that runs from four hundred and ties into the sidewalk in my support. So, I mean, that's sort of the plan, but when, or whenever you're going to get to do that, that means straight over to talk about this, so. And then you can do the sidewalk. So there's a part of that. You may or may not even yet, or, but if you don't draw your path, and there's no, I mean, you don't ask, you can't say yes. I mean, that's where we've lucked out so many times, that we've been ready with our plans, and the ones were inaccessible, so that we were able to, to move very fast to other towns and use some of these parts on that state. And I make a motion that we authorize the, they can just submit the, the letter of, of interest for the, the TAP program.
I'll second.
And the sheet I gave is the authorization from the towns.
Council president.
Council president, so. I'll amend it that we authorize here, no one is signing, so that the, the TAP committee.
I'll second that.
All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the posts say aye. Motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Next up, we have Lauren who wants to discuss the Habitat for Humane community building.
I really have nothing to do with it. I commend Tanya and Lauren for their effort, against their efforts, so I'll give the floor to Lauren.
Hey, guys. So you think two properties in mind to do Habitat, one fell through, and now you're left with this one, which is a great property. So I've been working with Habitat for Wood County, and we think that we can build a license property for a Habitat house. Only thing was, the cost, since it's nonprofit, we have to raise all this money. Tanya and I have just some feelings about our social media re-response. So what we need to do is find out how much does this all going to cost? We have some numbers, but the biggest thing that I want to ask for you guys is to waive the permit fees. Thank you mission on.
Monday.
It's Monday today. So thank you mission on Monday showed some support that they would waive the permit fees. I just need to hear guys' thoughts. It's fifteen twenty-five for a new structure, we can waive the economic development and all that, just.
I agree.
Are you talking about utility?
No, no, there have been higher taxes there, so there's some capacity fees to be in there. Yeah, it's just the actual building permit fee itself. So the typical fees, fifteen twenty-five, what I would do is just waive the inspection fees for that, you can see, would go out, do inspections. You'd probably be out there every Sunday helping if you could.
Is this legal to you? I'm okay.
Then I make a motion.
Lauren, tell me a little bit about the usual.
Make a motion that we waive the planning permit fees. Do you recommend?
Great, we might be the first bill for spring, I think Tanya and I are working really hard making that job, so. It'd be convenient to be built, we can get everybody included, Tommy Hartman, Boy Scouts, duty, anybody that's related, all in the community, residents, water farms, everybody. So we're really excited about it.
I'll second your motion.
All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All the posts say aye. Motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. All right, we'll move on to the police scouts presentation. Thank you for coming in.
Hello, Mark Pashon, I'm from sixteen six six South Giraffe in Scienceville. And I'm here to follow up, because of your kind acceptance of us opening up our tree lot here for the municipal complex. I just wanted to follow up and say that we have now got online presence, we've got our plans to set up a tree lot on the twenty-first. We'll start our sales next up in the morning on Friday, the twenty-ninth. And we'll go through that weekend, and on week, and on Sunday. And we're very excited. So there's no change of plans, although you have made some changes, the apartment lot looks considerably different. So our, our signage plan might be just a little bit different than we put our signs from the diagram I gave you last time. But it's like custom built, I appreciate it. I think, you know, police scouts have a lot to do with that change. So I don't know if you have any questions in need. I don't know if you, are you able to get online, the website? And see, if you go to true three five eight dot biz, you can see what we've done. And you can preorder a tree, you can order a recycle of a Christmas tree. Sorry.
I gotta go upstairs, too.
Oh, he does, I'm sorry, guys.
He's getting his stuff.
Yeah, I know, I see. So. Twenty-seven. True three five eight dot biz, B I Z.
How many trees are you anticipating in this one?
We're going to start with sixty. So mixture of Fraser fir and Douglas firs, and different sizes. Depending on how it goes, we, if we sell earlier, we can transfer a few more trees. Martin, true three five eight dot B I Z. Dot B I Z, there you go. So you can preorder a tree, and recycle it, as well as racing it, so you'll get the two lots opened up. We go above, we talk about the zip codes that we serve, right there, Boone County and all around us. And if you go to like Shop Now, or the left-hand side, or Bridge, or Market, or.
Are we going, are you going to only recycle trees that are sold from the tree, or will you pick up other trees?
No, actually, we won't recycle any Christmas tree. You do not have to buy a tree from the tree, although it has to be a live tree. And, you know, I, I don't, I hope we make causes for fourteen footer or something, because our boys are going to make that.
So any one of those trees, from any place, a live tree, can recycle, the police scouts tend to know how to get care of it.
Sure, I wanted to also offer the council, if you need a tree to put up here at this wonderful facility, please say so, I think the, the boys would think that would be the right thing to do. At Lyons Park, we currently give them a tree every year as well.
And one has to recycle, and one has to pick up.
So recycling, it starts the afternoon of New Year, the first Saturday after the term of the year. And after you've signed up, of course, it costs fifteen dollars, but if you have a tree out on the curb, nine, by nine a.m., we'll pick it up and take it away. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
You'll also have some research as well, right? We got to talk about trees.
Yeah, we have a press release, which will be coming out of probably tomorrow, that we hope that it's prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost in conjunction, and Mr. Pashon, you, you guys might know this, we had one Whitestown resident going before a new order review, which is the highest number of scouts had yesterday. Do you know if that occurred?
Yes, I do believe, you're right, I should have said something, because I did feel the question last time, if there were any Whitestown scouts in our tree, and there are, and now you have any recent Eagle scouts.
Very cool.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll move on to the clerk Fraser report. Any question? All right, moving on to department reports. Any questions, right?
Mr. White, I should say, you know, we got live school planning, fire, and police. We've gotten a couple of work clocks and hats, and.
Well, I always tell everybody, if you don't have anything to report, there's no reason to put a report, so unless Nathan has something that he wants to report to you now, town, I usually give you my report when we do the, at the end, and other business, unless there's expenditure for other items. And D W, really, there's been nothing, no changes since the last meetings.
Okay, what about the ways of our tree to plan? You know, okay, those.
Ways of our tree to plan is we'll need to do it under other, under the business.
All right, we'll move on to new business. First up, we are going to open the public hearing regarding ordinance twenty fifteen dash twenty-five, and ordinance approving additional appropriations. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on the ordinance twenty fifteen dash twenty-five? All right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
I'll second that. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All the posts say aye. Now, ordinance twenty fifteen, next twenty-five, on First Street. So the number on First Street, the recognition, is that we're going to say there?
Each year, the end of the year, we do additional appropriations to make the budget, I guess, always to work. And apply. Certain different, now, now this is being run in the red. Certain line items, we take funds from one to the other, as the year rolls along, this is that. We can sometimes do this in December, December is to be a little late, so this year, we'll do it in October.
Just one, a lot of, a lot of around, but what's the function?
It's basically the rescue, is that part, and we have to put the back of it to this line. So he actually received that much money donations to cover his affairs. So this is just how we make it transparent, and we hope to show that it's approved, and we'll be able to say.
It's, it's not, it's not necessary to do, we do it because we want to be more transparent, there's just not required, we do it anyway, to show it, show that it's been done. And that was a man, that was a man's earth.
So Steve, can we adopt this on secondary, denied, this is temporary?
Yes, brings me names.
At First Street, additional appropriation ordinance number twenty fifteen dash twenty-five, so I would make the motion that suspend the rules in half second, if you disagree.
I'll second that motion.
All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the posts say aye.
Second reading, additional appropriation ordinance number twenty fifteen dash twenty-five, I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty fifteen twenty-five, the additional appropriation ordinance.
I'll second that. All right, all of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the posts say aye. Ordinance is adopted on secondary. All right, on to letter beginning of new business, ordinance twenty fifteen dash twenty-six, an ordinance prohibiting the operation of underhanded vehicles on town trails of walking. operation of motorized vehicles on town trails and walking paths.
Believe it or not. As soon as the portion of the Marriage Trail, which is now paying, which is from Pier Street less to 575, was completed, our town utility workers started seeing vehicles driving past them on the trail that were not authorized vehicles. We were a little flattered asking for that. And so Jason, Nathan, myself, Eric, Steve, others, Susan, we talked about this and obviously. And unfortunately, we need an ordinance that states that only authorized vehicles can use that trail if needed and all other trails and walking paths in the town. Sometimes we drive vehicles on this walking path in front of a building to park as an exception to the rule. So that's why this ordinance is needed. This ordinance also sets up a fine structure if you are caught and you get to do it.
And the way it's written, Steve, the fines would go into the general fund.
Just like an interim question.
I hope we don't get too deep. I hope we don't run out of producers.
You've never been in one one place that I've noticed quite big. If you've never been to Probston State Park, which just trail where the natural park is. Within the park, they have these bowls.
There will be the most, there will be the most trails as well. But there will be sections of the trail. It'll be almost inaccessible. This is just a, just in case somebody decides to access. Nathan?
Yeah, they'll be bothered if the sign is most completed. But as always, if you drive in the grass or through the ditch line, you can get on the trails. There are still areas if somebody drives in the grass, they can easily get on one. I mean, also keep smaller vehicles off of the trails, golf carts, you know, they can be TVs because they are unsafe. There was somebody said that they were almost hit by one of the vehicles that was on it because there's a couple of little dead center. Makes a really pretty trail and nice kind of walk through the wood area. But if our vehicles coming down at 20, 20, 30 mile an hour, they're not going to see as clear around the turn. And there's not a lot of the outway, the full size vehicle. So yeah, so it will be signed following once the final show this goes on.
Yeah, it's a recommendation that we suspend the rules tonight to adopt this meeting.
Yes.
I'd like to do first grade ordinance 2015-26, promoting the operation of motorized vehicles on town trails and walking paths. And I'd also like to make a motion to suspend the rules in half second reading of ordinance 2015-26.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we've got a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Rules are suspended.
Ordinance 2015-26, promoting the operation of motorized vehicles on town trails and walking paths. I make a motion we adopt ordinance 2015-26 and ordinance promoting the operation of motorized vehicles on town trails and walking paths.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted. Next up, we have resolution 2015-33. It's a resolution of the town council of the town of Whitestown to be encouraging the West Town Police and Fire Department to establish a child safety program.
Josh and Dennis, don't worry, you have people to certify on the child safety. Can we just formalize this? Just formalize it?
Yes, for for appointing certification, we had several that were certified in the certification last. The prior amount of time I took over was G and they were really respecting the program. As of two weeks ago, we've reopened the program. We have somebody who went to a certification class and we've actually just today kind of finalized at the end of January, February, West Town will actually be hosting a certification class so we can continue to certify additional firefighters and police officers again to take this program to another. Also looking into another another aspect add on to the program of becoming certified in specialty car seat installation as well. Currently, to my knowledge, the only place anyone can go to get that taken care of officially by a technician is at Riley Hospital. So it will be one of very few satellite locations that actually could take care of specialty car seats as well.
Thank you, Ryan. I was not going to somehow script it. Yeah, this is incredible. We need to apologize to this. And speaking of child seats, congratulations on your appointment to live with another baby.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'd make a motion to adopt town of Whitestown, giving a resolution number 2015-2, resolution the town council of Whitestown, giving encouraging of the police and fire departments to establish a child safety program.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Resolution is adopted. All right, next up we have resolution 2015-33.
Yes, and Katie Collins, City Mayor of Zinsville, the applicant, the applicants here, I assume they probably have a business situation to run to because this is their family business. Currently, the company